Meeting to order and we'll do a roll call. Carrie Forlino. Joe Coletti.
Joe Coletti, Hebron.
Gabe Marks.
Gabe Marks, Hebron.
Pam Farrington.
Pam Farrington.
Marlborough.
Amy Romancheck.
Amy Romancheck, Marlborough.
Scott Soye.
Scott Soye, Heather.
Mike Sharon.
Mike Flaherty.
Kirsten Erlinson.
Kirsten Erlinson, Andover.
Mike Bolio. And Drew Galton.
Drew Galton, Marlborough.
And Heather Summer, Hebron. Just, is it okay to use, like Drew said he preferred Drew over Andrew, or do I have to do a full name?
Uh, for minutes, it's going to reflect your full name. Right. Just for formality of having minutes, but for the sake of just communicating, sure.
Okay.
Totally fine.
Okay, um, so can all stand for the Fledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. In this republic, where it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with a deep justice for all.
Okay, Hebron, Andover, and Marlborough, community engagement and attendance at BOE public meetings is welcome. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the BOE may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the BOE is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the BOE is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. Is there anybody online that would like to make public comment? Okay, and there's nobody in the room. So we go to the board chair report.
Okay.
Oh, the student reps report, I'm so sorry. So let's start with Oliver.
I think it's all a very exciting time for students. We're in the middle of midterms. Um, everybody is like quite reasonably stressed about it. People are getting midterms about, they were waiting for them. Um, most students took two today, um, and midterms end this Wednesday, and this new semester starts Thursday, which is pushed back due to the COVID. And we have an exciting Jasmine concert February 1st, um, from seven to eight PM. And.
And to add on to that, you know, midterm's stressful, so there will be a mental wellness event. Um, Tuesday, February 13th, after school, which will include watercolor and meditation. Um, to help, I guess, students find their balance or something, inner peace, if you will. Um, and yearbooks are now being sold, um, online, and the deadline to get your yearbook is, um, January 26th. And, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mentioned it, Mike's.
Well, just, um, Dawn, uh, Mike Bolio just showed up a little late, but if you want to just mark as an attendance.
Um, okay, so for the chair report, um, Colin and I have talked about having a board retreat and bringing in our, uh, Jessica Ritter, our lawyer from Shipman and Goodwin. The goal of the board retreat is to go over roles and responsibilities. It will probably take about an hour and a half, so we thought it would be best to pick a Monday that's outside of a regular meeting. Um, and we would do it with, we serve dinner, so we'd have a little bit of time to meet everybody and get to know everybody. So we would ask that folks that typically zoom in for these, if you could come in person, we haven't set the date yet. It would be probably in one of the Mondays between February and March, and we'll get back to you guys on that. Um, we finished the committee assignments, so for facilities, safety, and transportation, we have Mike Sharon, Joe Coletti, and Gabe Marks. Finance, audit, compliance, and insurance is Mike Bolio. Do I say that right?
Bollier.
Bollier, okay, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Kirsten Erlinson and Amy Romancheck. Policy is going to be Carrie Forlino, Drew Galton, Gabe Marks, and Scott Soye. Program and communications is Mike Sharon, Kirsten Erlinson, Pam Farrington, Amy Romancheck, and Scott Soye. Does anybody have any questions on the committees? Okay, great. Um, typically, so we have two organizations where we try and have board representation, um, at their board meetings. One is CAPE, which Carrie Forlino, um, staffs for us, and then the other one is EastCon. And Mike Morris had done it in the past, um, but we wanted to see if there was anybody that would be interested. Um, were you able to connect?
Yeah, I wasn't, I can give a rough idea. So, so EastCon, for those of you that don't know, is our local regional educational service center. It's, they're a local, uh, agency based out of, um, I think they're in Hampton. Um, and they provide support to school districts in a variety of manners. We utilize them for transportation. We utilize them for contracted services in, in, in some capacity. We just, they're a really good, strong partner with us, and they have a, a board of directors for EastCon. And in order to be a member of the Board of Directors for EastCon, you have to be the member of a Board of Education for one of the school districts that partners with EastCon. And we've had a longstanding partnership with them. We've had a board member on their executive board probably for many, many years. And, um, with, uh, the changeover of board members, it's just, uh, it's an opportunity if somebody wants to get involved on more of a regional level as well. Um, it is a, certainly, I, I, if, if there is anybody that's interested in doing it, I'm working to try to find out exactly what the time commitment would be, because I'm, I was thinking of the fact that that would be a consideration. Uh, or actually, I could probably just share information in my, in my weekend review with everybody as far as the time commitment and what it would look like, and the, uh, amount of meetings, the number of meetings, the duration of meetings, et cetera. Um, but as I said, I, uh, I know that they'd love to maintain somebody from the Region Eight Board of Education as a member of their executive board as well.
Okay, um, so you guys can think about that. If you want to reach out to Colin, you can even connect you with
Yeah.
the guy from EastCon if you want to ask questions. Um, the last thing on my report is the BOE budget, which I believe we're going to see tonight. Um, but Colin is also scheduling town presentations, which is something he did last year, where he met with each one of the towns to go through the budget with them and let them, um, ask any questions and, and poke at it a bit. It's both selectmen and the Board of Finances, or just finance?
It, uh, in Hebron, it's both, I think it's a combined Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen. In Marlborough, I think it is, I think it is, um, formerly a Board of Finance meeting that I do believe some Board of Selectmen attend as well. Um, and in Andover, it was a similar thing. It was a Board of Finance meeting specifically that I believe others attend as well.
Okay, so he's, uh, started scheduling them. The first one is for Marlborough, and it will be February 1st. Hebron is going to be March 12th, and Andover, we are still, um, working on a date.
And, uh, if it's, I was talking to Heather earlier on today and just said, you know, that it's, uh, um, in the past, we've had board members from Region Eight attend those meetings. I think it, uh, it's good to have, um, representation of our board attending the meetings. So, you know, if you live in Marlborough and you can attend that meeting, if you're representative from Andover or Hebron to attend the meeting, uh, it is definitely something that I think is good to have the support of the board there. I won't put you on the spot, you won't be asked anything, it's just more of, uh, just to be a face in the crowd.
Yeah, me too. I was going to add that, but I'm glad you did. So I know, I know I always try to attend
Yeah.
the Hebron meetings, and I've jumped onto some of the Marlborough and Andover meetings as well. It just shows unity, I think, between the administration and the boards.
Thanks.
And we're up to you.
All right, great. So, uh, I'll start by just, uh, congratulating, congratulating and recognizing four Ram High School students who are recently chosen as Connecticut Art Scholastic Winners. Uh, we have Luke Randazzo, who won a Gold Key for Digital Art. Nina Jobs, she won a Silver Key for Jewelry Design. Malachi Warren, which is, um, an award for digital art as well. And Tallulah Stomberg got an honorable mention for sculpture. Uh, the students' artwork will be displayed as a part of a statewide art exhibit in Hartford. Uh, I think, actually, I'm wrong right now. I think, uh, I think they were setting up this week for the art exhibit, and it's a statewide art exhibit being shown in Hartford. So congratulations to those students. I also want to recognize and thank, uh, students from the high schools' entrepreneurial classes. Uh, they got together and sponsored a canned drive over a couple of week period, uh, earlier this month. Um, approximately a hundred canned food items were donated to AHM. All, all the donations were, were given to the H M Food Shelter, and again, just a testament to our kids doing some really great things. Um, a fun event took place, um, uh, a couple of Fridays ago, uh, which was the middle school held their first HEP rally, I think since pre-pandemic, Dr. Strusy, yes. Uh, it was quite an event. Uh, the, um, it was just a really an opportunity for sports teams to be recognized, teams to be recognized, just all and all around school spirit. It was great. Uh, if I'm understanding it correctly, it was organized and completely run by the Student Council, um, completely. Uh, and, and it was a really, really well-organized event. Uh, it had things like T-shirt giveaways, a pie eating contest, um, a Hulu contest, which I think that was the longest Hulu contest I've ever seen in my life. Um, it, I mean, there was a, a staff member who, I know it was like seven or eight minutes, it was, I was exhausted just watching it, so. Um, and, uh, again, just a really, really good event. Um, on that same day, actually, uh, our high school counseling staff worked with 10th grade students on career exploration, resume writing, and discussing graduate requirements and PSATs. Um, it's all part of, uh, the work of working to create a student success plan. Um, and again, just a really great event. Um, Ram students who are members of Tri-M, which is a National Music Honor Society, uh, recently visited Colebrook Assisted Living to perform a recital for its students that happened about a week and a half ago. And, uh, again, the, the residents of the home were appreciative of having our students there as well. Um, and that concludes my report.
Okay, uh, next thing, um, on the agenda is the approval of the January 3rd meeting minutes. Do we have a, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from that special January 3rd, 2024 Board of Ed meeting.
So moved, Gabe Marks.
Gabe Marks made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mike Bollier seconded the motion. All in favor?
Okay.
Oh, we have to speak about it, right? Any questions, right?
And I do have one, one thing I don't have to change these, but, um, where there are votes that weren't unanimous. I, I've been raising the policy, part of my job now. According to one of our policies, and it's number, uh, 9341, we are supposed to have, record the votes. I don't think we have to record, uh, who voted, but, you know, 92 kind of, kind of thing, I think, are supposed to be on there. Where it's unanimous, obviously, that's fine. So that's probably for Dawn.
Okay.
Well, that should be reflected.
We can, it doesn't need to be reflected, because I'm just saying that for future ones, I think we should actually follow that policy. Sure.
There aren't many, you know, non-unanimous votes, but there are some. And, and I noticed that when we voted for chair, because there were two candidates and each had some votes.
Yep.
So, and there's at least one other place where I, I talk to the policies.
Okay, thank you. Um, anybody else have any comments on it? Okay, now the last, um, all in favor?
All in.
Opposed? Anyone who looks stained? Who, who can move this move? Okay, um, we have a teacher.
Okay. Resignation.
Um, we have a motion to, uh, accept the resignation.
Just a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, okay, a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, that, Mike Sharon made the motion. Second?
I'll second.
Amy? Amy Romancheck made the second. And then just, is there discussion then?
Uh, no, I'll just simply say that, uh, I'm excited for Candy. I think she indicates in her letter she's been working in the district for 24 years, uh, and has made the decision to, uh, move on to the next stage of her life, and I'm excited for her and wish her all the best in the world.
Um, can I poke at this again? It could, is this something that we can move to, like, at the end when we report out? It seems, it just seems weird to me that we vote on somebody's resignation or retirement.
Well, you, you raise an issue that I've talked about in the past, and I'd be happy to entertain a conversation on this. Um, we've had situations where, uh, board, the board has accepted the resignation. The board doesn't need to technically accept the resignation of people, right? Um, it, it's, uh, and I think the last time we had a board meeting was January 3rd, and you accepted the resignation of somebody who had stopped working for us in December. So I, I would be more than happy to change the format of this if the board is, is interested in doing so, to simply a report of a personnel report, which would be a monthly report, which just simply explains to you, here are resignations, or here are retirements that we've gotten. It would not be something that we needed to be approved by the board, because resignations and retirements don't. She's retiring whether or not you like it.
But it would like be able to express regret, or, you know, or whatever, so.
Or congratulations.
Congratulations, yeah.
And so it would be something that I would bring to the board.
24 years.
Uh, it, it would be something that I could certainly bring to the board, and I could tell the board, this is a, this is our personnel report for this particular month. Um, but it could be something that doesn't need to be voted upon, and then to your, to your desire to express congratulations and excitement for that individual, when certainly that opportunity would be presented to itself.
Yeah, it's not always the case, but in this particular case, the letter was, you know, it was a nice letter that said that they, they really appreciated their time here at the, in the district, and they've done so for 24 years.
Sure.
So that was great to read. So that much is, is next to happen. We're voting on it. I think I agree with, it sounds like the consensus is that it will be not necessary.
Uh, yeah, it, it, we, I've talked about this, I think, in the past, and, um, was, was with the reconstitution of the po- I was going to start with policy and just have the conversation there, but I'm happy to have the conversation with the entire board. Um, as I said, uh, it's, it's, I, I, I thought it was ironic at the January meeting when we voted to accept somebody's resignation that had left us three weeks prior.
Right.
Um, I, I personally think it's a, it's better to just be provided with a, a, a report. Uh, again, I could just keep calling it a personnel report. There's going to be some months that I don't have any.
So if that goes to, does that go to the policy committee?
No, I was going to raise it with the policy committee, just as a starting point of conversations formality, but again, you
Okay.
you've brought it up, so I, I think that we can bypass that. Because it's not a policy, it's, it's just, it's a practice that has long existed, I think, in the district.
Yeah, so really no need to vote on it either.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Okay, um, my other question is, and I know that there's privacy issues, but at the end of the year, is it possible to say that, you know, two people left because of pay, two people left because of commute, two people left because they retired? Like, to kind of understand what's happening with, with attrition, is that? I know it's getting very close to the privacy line.
Yeah.
Not associating it with a person, just kind of understanding why there's turnover.
You know, i- if, if the board was interested in having, like, I do exit interviews, and we've had this conversation. I've done it, I do exit interviews with people when I have somebody who's retired or resigning unexpectedly for reasons that I might not be aware of. I'll sit down, I'll have a conversation with that individual, um, get their thoughts and, their thoughts and feelings. Um, I can certainly share with the board a summary. I wouldn't want to share, hey, this particular person is leaving, and here's the reason why. Just for the exact.
Right, I don't think we, I don't think we really need to know person by person, but I think it would, I don't know, be helpful to know that there's a trend.
Yeah.
Why people are leaving.
Sure, I, I, you know, I, what I would want to do is just make sure that I'm not broaching any privacy. I think that the way that we're describing it should be fine.
Yeah, I run it by the lawyers.
Yeah, but, but I'm going to want to double check and make sure that I'm not crossing any.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Okay, so how do we vote on this still, or no?
Uh, you do.
Does it happen next month?
For the consent agenda for this one, I think for the sake, uh, the motion's been made, it's been seconded.
Okay.
I think we vote on it just for the sake of it, and it's, uh, and it's always good to do it one last time.
Okay, so, um, we had Mike who brought the motion, Amy seconded it. Um, all in favor?
All.
Opposed? Anybody staying? Motion.
And so just, do we need a, a motion and a discussion about removing this from a, the consent agenda and turning it into a?
I would, I would defer, I would defer to to you as, as the chair, whether or not you think it's necessary. It, it's not something that is a, it's not like we're changing a policy.
No.
It, so I, I don't think that the exercise of going, I feel like I'm getting some very clear direction from you all as board members. Um, and that's what I was actually just going to summarize and recap.
It's a consensus vote.
Sure.
Just so that you know that.
Yeah, I was going to say, just to, just to make sure that we're clear.
Okay, with a motion or just a vote?
Well, I think a consensus vote is out of, it's really out of process, so I think it's really just to find out that the, the consensus of the board agrees with the suggestion.
Okay, so everyone who's in favor of changing retirements and, um, exits from, from the district as
To a personal.
to a personal report at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, and remove from the consent agenda.
And remove. Remove from the consent agenda. All in favor?
All.
Opposed? Uh, hey, anybody abstaining? Okay, so I think it's approved. Okay?
All.
I told me that heard, I need to be heard about that.
Oh, if you need a first motion, uh, you need a second, I'm, I'm your second.
And everybody, um, like Kirsten and Pam, you guys were good. Something broke up there for a second. I just want to make sure that you're.
Yes, I'm good.
Okay.
That was good.
Okay.
The presentation is in the front pocket of the, uh, front group. Derek, if you want to cue up the presentation, please. Uh, so, uh, I'm really pleased to present the proposed administrative budget for the 2004, 2005, 2024, 2025 fiscal year. Not going back 20 years in time, uh, to both the board and the entire Region Eight community. The proposed budget for 23, or I'm sorry, for the 2024, 2025 fiscal year is $31,960,459, and represents an overall budget increase of 2.64%. This amount is a combination of a net operating budget of $31,462,040 and a capital budget of $498,419. There are several drivers increasing the proposed budget over the current years. Significant budget drivers include health insurance, which is currently budgeted at a 16.5% increase, is adding $279,318. Salary increases, $521,300. Special education out placements, $392,691. Special education transportation, $39,411. Software, $83,269. Utilities, a combination of both natural gas and electricity, $35,839. Instructional supplies, $22,882. And general supplies, $34,751. The proposed operating budget also includes significant reductions. The notable reductions include our principal and interest on bond payment. The renovations of the campus in 2004 were done through bonding. For the 2024, 2025 fiscal year, the total principal and interest payment will be $421,413, which is a decrease of $655,900 from the current fiscal year. This payment amount will be consistent until the bonding is paid off at the conclusion of 26, 27 fiscal year. General education transportation is being reduced by $110,822. Purchased and professional services being reduced by $75,382. And our Chromebook technology financing cycle includes a decrease of $60,776 due to the stabilization, stabilization of that finance package. This chart shows the percentage distribution of the proposed budget by each object category in relation to the total budget. As you can see, 71,000 of the proposed operating budget is allocated to employees, salaries, and benefits. They are fixed costs associated with staffing our spheres. The funds proposed for next year's capital budget represent a small percent of the actual needs identified. The proposed capital budget is $498,419, which is $42,571 lower than the current year's capital budget. The proposed capital budget will enable the district to improve our safety and security posture, continue to address issues related to the maintenance of the building's exteriors, and replace aging furniture, fixtures, and equipment. The development of the capital budget was a collaborative effort between district administration and members of the facilities and finance subcommittees. The table, this table provides a budget history of Region Eight. As you can see, the district has a demonstrated history of fiscal responsibility. Our school districts across state and country are contending with rising costs and challenging economic times, and I am pleased that the proposed budget of a 2.64% increase is reasonably increased considering these factors. This table provides the per pupil expenditure for a secondary regional school districts. Region Eight's PPE increased slightly from last year. However, we continue to provide a high-quality educational experience for our students at a cost that is amongst the lowest in the state for secondary regional districts. This graph shows the district's October 1st enrollment since 2015, as well as the projected enrollment through the 2033, 2034 school year. For the October 23 report to the state, district enrollment was 1,188. As you can see, current projections indicate that enrollment will decrease through the 25, 26 school year before increasing to numbers exceeding our current enrollment within four years. The October 1st, 2023 enrollment for Ram Middle School was 369 students. Enrollment at the middle school is projected to remain steady for the next three years before increasing in the 27, 28 school year. The October 1st, 23 enrollment for Ram High School was 779 students. High school enrollment is projected to experience a slight decrease in enrollment through the 26, 27 school year before gradually increasing and eventually surpassing current enrollment. It is very important to note that over the next 10 years, the elementary districts feeding into Ram are projected to increase their combined enrollment by over 300 students. This graph shows the projected combined elementary enrollment from, from the districts of Andover, Hebron, and Marlborough through the 2033, 2034 school year. The projected enrollment growth at the elementary school districts that feed into Ram indicate Ram enrollment will continue to grow beyond our current 10-year projections. Excellent. The proposed budget also includes personnel changes. The Director of Curriculum and Instruction would be a full-time, 12-month administrative position focused on providing leadership in ongoing development and improvement of the entire instructional program for the district. The person in this position would also oversee the planning and implementation of professional development activities for certified staff. Region Eight has previously, previously had this administrative position, but it was eliminated through the budget process five years ago. The reinstatement of this position would be FTE neutral, as it would allow for the elimination of the curriculum coordinator instructional coach position that the board put into place for this year. Over the past several years, both the number and complexity of projects being managed by the facilities director has increased significantly. Considering the age of the facilities and its major systems, the number and complexity will only grow. Puppled with the ongoing work with, with, associated with annually required inspections, managing 17 staff members, creating purchase orders, approving invoices, and record keeping needed for budgeting purposes, the facilities director needs administrative assistance in managing their significant responsibilities. The addition of this position would provide that support. Also in the budget is the addition of, uh, well, not addition of, it's the increase of an FTE for our music department staff. Uh, with the addition of a guitar class in the 24, 25 high school educational app- With the addition of a guitar class in the 24, 25 High School Educational Opportunities Handbook, the administration anticipates the need to increase music department staffing by a .2 FTE. Also, a change in personnel is the 23, 24 budget funded a .8 FTE occupational therapist. This proposed budget would increase that position to a 1.0 FTE. However, .4 of that full-time position would be subcontracted out to a nearby school district, which also has the need for a part-time occupational therapist. So even though we'd be increasing our budget by approximately $18,000, we would be able to recoup about $45,000 by subcontracting that position out. Proposed personnel changes also include the reduction of two positions. The first is a high school social studies position, where a vacancy is being created by the retirement of a staff member at the conclusion of the current year. The administration reviewed staffing needs for 24, 25 and determined the position does not need to be filled. The other reduction is a high school study hall monitor, where a vacancy is also being created by the retirement of a staff member at the conclusion of the current year. The position will also not. Currently, there are two factors which could impact the proposed budget and lead to possible changes. First is health insurance benefits. They are negotiated through the bargaining process. However, insurance premium cost rates are adjusted each year based off of trends and claims. These adjustments are determined by the Region 8 Health and Medical Insurance Consortium, and based on the current trends and claims, the consortium's established increase is currently 16.5% for next year. And as I've already shared, that represents a dollar amount of $279,318. That number can change through the budget process. The next is.
When is that number placed?
Usually March. The next possible change relates to tuition for magnet and agri-science schools. The district is responsible for paying for the tuition for students who choose to attend magnet and agri-science schools. House Bill 6941 includes changes for magnet school and agri-science tuition beginning in the 2024, 2025 school year. In short, Bill 6941 caps tuition paid by districts to magnet and agri-science schools at 58% of the amount that's being paid in this current fiscal year. It provides, it further provides that state grants will make up the difference between what we are going to be paying and what is, what we are paying and not paying for next year. And so state grants are supposed to make up the difference. However, there is concern as to whether or not there will be adequate grant funding from the state to fully fund that change and make agri-science and magnet school operators whole. And there is a possibility that changes may occur in February when the next legislative session opens. The proposed budget currently provides flat funding for magnet and agri-science tuition, which basically means we didn't increase the tuition costs in our budget for next year. We just flat funded them for what we're paying now. But that number could go down from the 100% by 42%. We just simply don't know yet. So there is the possibility that as the process goes on, and if we learn of any changes, that, that budget number might change.
What's the total dollar amount? Approximate.
I don't have the total dollar amount. I could tell you that the projected savings would be about $110,000. Next slide, please. So the proposed administrative budget reflects the efforts of district and school administration, department coordinators, and other staff to put forward a responsible budget that maintains the high-quality educational programming and facilities that the Ram community has come to expect while also meeting the social, emotional needs of students. It is the result of several months of collaboration between school and district administrators, department coordinators, and staff, and is intended to provide the Board of Education and members of the general public with a clear understanding of the district's programs and priorities. The administration and staff of Regional School District 8 are grateful for the support of the Board of Education and the communities of Hebron, Andover, and Marlboro. And to provide a high-quality education for our students, which prepares them to make meaningful contributions to society. The board is scheduled to meet on April 1st to adopt the 24, 25 budget, and I look forward to working with board members until that time to review the proposed budget, provide more information. The last slide shows the dates that we've set. As we've talked about, we have the Marlboro meeting, the Hebron meeting. We have some workshops coming up over the next couple of Mondays. That just shows our budget timeline. Within the context of the bindings that you've been provided is the entire budget, which provides obviously a much higher level of detail. The first 50-some-odd pages are a combination of numbers and narratives to go along with those numbers. And then the pages following the opening, you'll see a different colored piece of paper in there. It separates it out and it just shows spreadsheets, which provides the budget reporting split out. Includes my presentation.
So I have a couple of questions. So the Marlboro you have here is February 21st. I feel everybody February 1.
Yeah, I heard February 1.
That's what I said.
It's February 21st, and I apologize. I missed it. It's February 21st.
It's February 21st. Okay, and what's the timing of those meetings?
Generally speaking, they're around the 6 o'clock to 7 o'clock start time.
Okay.
I can look at my calendar.
That's okay. Just as an idea, I can get closer and send out reminders.
Sure, absolutely.
Agro, agri-science, is that like VoAG?
It's, yes, correct. So it was known as VoAG for many, many, many years. I'd say two or three years ago shifted over and is now being considered, now it's called agri-science.
The salary increases, those are all negotiated, right?
So they are negotiated through the contract, so the contract bargaining, but then once they're negotiated.
And then the only other thing I have is just, I'll just type 2.5 here, but it's 2.5.
This is 2.85.
It's last year. It's not this year. Okay.
So then 24, 25.
Okay, okay. Can we have other questions?
Yeah, you know, I'm new to this. So I'm looking. So. So if I look in here and I see all the budget stuff, it starts with 100. Is that what 100 is here?
Correct. So your salary all start with, the oblique code is the last three numbers in the count, and all salaries start with the number one. So 110 would be administrative, 111 would be your certified staff, 112 would be your non-certified staff.
Okay, and.
So if you look on page six in here, so in this document that has the proposed, so page six.
Yeah.
There's a table above the pie chart.
Oh, excellent. I have a little more. Okay, great.
Colin, do you want to just kind of review what's going to happen next with the budget and the department?
Sure, absolutely. So next week, we have a number of department coordinators or directors that are going to be coming and doing a brief presentation summary of the work that their department does and some information related to their budgets for their departments. And then the following week, we have the remaining directors and/or subject coordinators that will come in and do that. So we have two meetings over the next two Mondays, where they'll come in and they'll do their presentations and be able to answer questions that board members may have for the department coordinators. What I also think is that it would be helpful for, I know that this is a lot to take in and digest, obviously, in between now and next Monday, is to take the time to look through the pages of the budget book. And I think, you know, looking at those first 50-some-odd pages where you have both a combination of the narrative that explains the budget and provides a context for the budget, coupled with some numbers, and familiarize yourself with it. And basically, what we are going to want to do is not only have the department and coordinators, curriculum coordinators present to you, but we also want to do our best to answer questions that might come up. What is super helpful for us so that we can be prepared to respond to questions that board members have is if you could email us any questions you have in advance of the meeting. Obviously, if something comes up over the weekend and you spring a question on us, we could try our best, but it's always best if you can email us. When do we?
Um, so Friday before the meeting would be helpful.
Yeah, so if you could email us like Friday, end of day, so like 4 o'clock on Friday afternoon, to email us with any questions you might have, and just send them directly to me, and then Eva and I will have those. We'll make sure that we're prepared to answer any questions that people might have. As I said, when you, when you're getting into the weeds in a meeting, we might, while we try to have all the answers for people, you know, depending on the level of detail that you're looking for, if it's asked in the meeting, we'll have to get back to you with that response.
Pam?
This might not be, Colin, anything that you can answer right now. But I was just wondering, can you explain to the board that the, the number for the outplacement? Can you explain that at all? How many students that is and so forth? And my other question was, I think you mentioned a .2 guitar, maybe?
Correct.
And I'm assuming, obviously, I'm assuming the music department needed that. I was just wondering about what it would be like to hire someone just as a .2.
It's a great, I'll start with the easy one, Amy, which is the second question you asked, if it's okay. We actually, we actually currently have somebody that works for us as a .6 FTE. We would simply take that person's staffing and increase it by .2 and make it .8.
That makes more sense to me. I just was wondering where we were coming with a .2 person.
So with regards to the students, there is information in the, in the budget book, which provides detail with it. Page 25, Amy, which again, I apologize because I know you don't have it in front of you, but I'll be able to email this document to you guys later on this evening and get your hard copies as well. But on page 25 of the budget book, it looks like we're budgeting for 23 outplacements next year for special education students.
Did that cover it, Pam?
Yeah, and again, I know that's not, you know, a lot of that is confidential that we can't really speak about. I was just wondering, because it did seem like an awfully high number, so I was just wondering what the actual number of students was.
The 23 is the total.
Correct.
Right? Not just specialized, but also VoAG.
That's. Specialized out of district placements.
Right.
What is the post-secondary transition program?
Okay.
I'm sorry?
What is the post-secondary transition program?
So, so per Connecticut state law, students, once they graduate high school, some students who have been identified with specific needs, are, the school district is required to provide post-graduation education until they're 22 years of age. And so that is the students that are, it's, it's not something that all special education students do. That's determined through the IEP process. But the students that we do it for, they remain students bars and we provide.
Do they stay here at Ram or do they go someplace?
No, it's, it's outside program.
Okay, interesting.
Does anybody have any other questions on the budget presentation?
It's very well when I read it.
Just an observation that I'm taking away from personnel changes, Slide 13, it looks like a net negative.
It is.
Okay. I just, I didn't hear you say that. I wanted to say. But other than that, I think that everything else looks as if it's.
It's a net negative personnel number, but.
Personnel number.
But salaries are going up.
Yeah, I didn't, just speaking to.
Yeah, it is definitely a net negative number. There is a, an entire, I'm sorry, there's an entire chart in the book starting on page 21, I believe, that is a personnel summary. So I think at the bottom, it shows the net negative changes. We're going down a .6 FTE for a net change. That's, that's inclusive, that's a combination of.
Yep, I just wanted to make the point.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Anybody else? So the next thing on the agenda is policies.
So in your packet are a number of policies that were reviewed and discussed with the policy subcommittee. Start with policy 4215, which is athletic coaches, evaluation termination. So this policy has been updated to make sure that it is aligned with current legislation around this particular topic. That's what we do with a lot of our policies that are being updated, obviously. Again, we went through the process of doing a red line version. There are pretty minor changes to it. You know, it's defining what an athletic director is and getting into just some minor language changes of the policy. I can certainly entertain questions if anybody has them. I'll just go through all of them if it's okay, and then if there's questions based off of any of the four. Our next one is 4160, 4260, which is nondiscrimination personnel. So this is a policy that has much more changes in it, as you can see. The last time this policy was updated was in 2017, and there's been substantial legislative changes pursuant to this particular policy. And so the recommended changes are reflective of those legislative changes. One of the things that we, that came out of our Board of Education Subcommittee is we actually are going to not include the specific name of the, either the 504 coordinator or the Title IX coordinator in the policy itself. And the reason we're not going to do that is because of the fact that we can change it in the reg without coming back to the board for an update. But if it required an update for the policy, it would require coming back to the board. So that's a change that we're going to do with this policy as well as the next policy, which I'll speak to next, which is 4161, 4261, which is the prohibition of sex discrimination and sexual harassment in the workplace. This is an interesting one because there, you'll, you'll notice if you look in your packet, it's enclosure 9.2C. There, this isn't really a red line version, and the reason it's not a red line version is the legislative changes were so substantive, it just, basically the recommendation from our attorney was, and you can see we've done this, X out your old policy, which is what we've done, and then just put the new language of the policy in here. What, and so again, the changes in this particular policy are reflective of those, reflective of those legislative changes. That's. That one. And then the the last one is that we're looking to revise is drug and alcohol use by students. Again, there's been changes related to legislation around drug and alcohol use by students, still prohibited. But there's just some things that have changed with the legalization of cannabis for people 21 years of age and older within the state. Essentially, the language of the policy says that you can't aligns with the language of legislation, which says essentially if students are caught with cannabis on school grounds, it's the same level of consequences if they had alcohol on school grounds. You can't hold them to a different standard because of cannabis, and that's just something that we're required to do. And so if there's any questions about any of those four policies, I can do my best to entertain any questions.
I'll say, I read through each of them, and it felt to me as if they were all legislative changes in nature. I didn't read anything that looked particularly unique or unusual based on what I've seen in recent legislation in Connecticut.
Any other questions about those first four? I can move on if need be. So, so there's three policies that we are looking at for a first read for deletion. The first one is Students 5133 Social Events. As, as the board knows, the exercise of going through a policy audit, there were, there were a lot of policies in there that were one or two sentences that were unnecessary and. There were a lot of policies in there that were one or two sentences that were unnecessary and, and we're trying to. Clean up our policy book by getting rid of ones that we don't need. There's a lot of policies that we have that could be, don't need to be uppercase policies for. Uppercase P as in board policies, but they could be things that are in, um. School handbooks and we've eliminated some of those policies already. This one is one that just simply says all school sponsored, uh. Social activities must be approved in advance by the principal. That is a, something that has to happen regardless, and it's something that principals are always consulted on any, uh, social events, um, that take place. The, the next one is school enumeration. Which again is, is simply restating, uh, Connecticut general statute, uh, ten dash two, four, nine. And it's, it's unnecessary to have it in a standard own policy because it's something that we're required to do, which is provide information about our enrollment and students who. Go to school here. So that's something that we do regardless of whether it exists in, in our policy or not. Um, and then the last one is, uh, community student contests, uh, which is one, four, two, two. This was an interesting one because it's a combination. It, it alludes to, uh, rules around CIAC, which is the athletic, the statewide athletic organization, which governs. High school and, uh, and middle school athletics, um, and it just says that we're gonna, um, participate in accordance with their rules and regulations. Well, we, we have to do that anyways. So that's, that's kind of the first part of the, of this particular policy. And then it talks about locally sponsored contests. Uh, not within the domain of, of CIAC or, or the Connecticut Association of Schools. And it just gives some, uh, some criteria for what needs to be considered, um, when approving a student contest. Um, and it just talks about the, the contest is educationally sound and worthy. It doesn't place much burden on family, students or teachers. Uh, it's not commercial and, um, it's voluntary and, and those are things that, um. I mean, we, we obviously make sure that we vet any types of contexts that are, that are suggested or brought up to us. A lot, a lot of times contests like these, uh, that would fall in this category come to us as fundraisers that different organizations or groups might be sponsoring like student fundraisers. For sports teams or for clubs or for classes. And, you know, the principals have to approve those things. I have to approve those things. All fundraisers are approved by building administration, athletic administration, myself. Uh, so we go through a process of vetting them as well. So, uh, again, those three policies are ones that, uh, we're recommending.
I absolutely agree with the, the second two. This one's superseded by law. There's just no reason to have a policy on, uh, school enumeration. The student contest, it's a broken policy right now. It's talking about things that. Student activity board of controls, they may actually know what that is. You know, we don't even know. So it's a broken policy. First one, uh, when it comes time, I'm gonna, um, suggest that we actually keep that one. The, uh, social events, just, I'm thinking that we, the, the process of removing this from the thing is, is kind of saying that. The board doesn't care if, if things are pre-approved by the superintendent or the, the building principal, and we, we don't really care if there's adult chaperonage. At, at these things, so. Sherman Goodman says it's not necessary, but I also don't think it's harmful and I, I think having had it, I. I'm less impressed with the idea of getting rid of it. So when the time comes, I will probably recommend that we, we drop this, we, we keep this.
Is it covered though in the, did you say at the beginning it was covered through?
I don't think this is one that is specifically mentioned in the student handbook. It's one that can be added to the student handbook, but like last, the last time we deleted policies. There were, there were things about students leaving school grounds and, and we said, we don't need that because it's covered under student handbooks. This is one that I don't believe in, and Penny's here, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Penny, I don't believe that this specifically is covered, but there's nothing that says. And that would be part of my recommendation. If I didn't say that, I apologize, is that we actually add language to our student handbook and, and family handbook that, that highlights the fact that. You know, all student events are approved by the building administration. But I, I can go either way. I understand.
My feeling is that handbook and such is not a replacement for policy when, when the board thinks. It should be. Some, sometime the board thought there should be policy, maybe, maybe we, we can decide otherwise, but my feeling is that it still should remain there.
Yeah, Sarah, I mean, this was adopted in two thousand and one was, do we have any history of why this policy was adopted?
Talk to the old timers.
It's not, not right.
Okay. Does anybody have any other comments or questions? Anybody online have any comments or questions? No. Okay. So the next thing on the agenda is our financials.
Okay, so in the handout in nine point three A, you have the expenditure and revenue report as of December thirty first, twenty twenty-three. I am proposing a net favorable position of a hundred thirty-one thousand, five hundred eighty-four dollars. The majority of the proposed net projection is associated with salary and employee benefits. We're currently awaiting, um, an estimated seventy percent for our active cost payment, the first half of the active cost payment. From the state of Connecticut. It usually arrives around February twenty ninth, twenty twenty-four. Um, and this is all specialized costs for our high-cost specialized students that exceed the four and a half times higher than that per pupil rate. And that is something that we have to calculate on an annual basis. And there's, um, been lots of play here because they're supposed to fund us a hundred percent and to date they have yet to fund us a hundred percent for this. So, um, seventy percent we'll take and there's rumors that we might go to seventy-five this year. So we'll take what we can get. Um, the expenditures, the departments are spending their funds. Um, I'm nudging them to make sure that all. Items are encumbered so that we can have a better picture to make sure what is still available and what people will not be spending. Due to changes in, um, process or supply chain issues. The capital improvement fund is currently focusing on the remaining project. Um, the dust collection system. Was completed. The contract has been awarded for the central office rooftop unit and the contract was signed today. The contract for the facility's condition assessment has been awarded and, um, the spring break is the targeted start of the assessment. So that means for next fiscal year, we should have better, um, what else needs to be done to our capital project and long-term. Our specialized department, people services department is, um, still. Reviewing any changes that come up and making sure that, um. POs are adjusted accordingly for IEP changes or new places. Are there any questions that the board may have at this time?
Yeah, since it's budget time and I'm new to all of this. Suppose your projection is spot on, but at the end of the year. We have this one hundred and thirty-one thousand extra. What happens? How does that fit into the next years?
What happens with that is, um, legislatively, the state has allowed school systems, regional school systems included, to carry two percent surplus. We're only allowed to keep two percent of our total budget. So, um, we're with thirty-one million dollar budget, so we're allowed to keep six hundred thousand.
So we would be able to keep this.
Correct. Anything above that would be returned to the towns as a credit offset.
Right. And when you say we keep it, where does it go?
It stays in our fund balance. And the only thing that a regional school district can use it on is capital non-recurring fund. So the board at that time, which will happen in February of this year, um, will. Vote to allocate the money to a project to unallocated, um. And an unallocated account to be named for a later date, um, on what projects we might want to work on. So right now we have the field. Projects happening and we don't have enough money to do all the fields. You know, the board might want to put some money towards that.
But it's all capital.
Correct.
Okay, good. Well, we have a lot of capital things to do, so.
And in the meantime, we can consider putting it into the STIP fund, right?
Correct, yes.
So, which is the. You'll get to it.
Yeah, that's our, our sweep account, right? Yeah.
Well, our short-term investment. Any other questions on that? So hearing none, nine point three B is the food service monthly report for expenditures as of December twenty twenty-four. We're currently running or experiencing a loss of fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred ninety-six thousand for the fiscal year. We're still awaiting some stabilization funds, so the stabilization funds are, um, funds that the state of Connecticut have decided. To provide children who are, all children to eat breakfast for free. And then children who are, um, identified as reduced also eat lunch for free. Everybody else, um. If you're free, you're free. If you're paid, you have to pay for your lunches. We did get the supply chain grant of thirty thousand dollars. Um, that helped us with inflationary costs for food and other paper good products. So that helped, um, a lot somewhat, but again, it's just a matter of participation and making sure that. Our, um, families are paying, who need to pay are paying for their product items. And or second base. Are there any questions?
Of course. So the top column?
Yes.
It really kind of threw me because it's the twenty-two, twenty-three academic year.
My bad. No, twenty.
I was, was having trouble. Each column item. This has like June twenty-three.
I changed the title and I didn't change the columns. You go.
I thought, oh geez, what do I not understand?
You understand perfectly fine. I can't read a column. All right. I'm sorry?
The grant you mentioned?
So it was a third allocation of supply chain funding, so that funding that the state of Connecticut decided to give. For in, inflationary costs for food costs and, um, paper goods.
Okay. And how long will that last? Cause you said it was the third installment. I'm like, how many do we guess?
Seem to be playing with that, but I'm not sure if there's gonna be anyone to be honest with you. But hopefully in this legislative session, maybe we'll find some. All right, any other additional questions? Okay, so hearing none, nine point three C is basically your high school and middle school student activity funds. These are as of December thirty first, twenty twenty-three. Um, so the report attached balances to the Webster bank account. Are there any questions on student activity? Okay, so.
So if money gets spent, is it the student organization that spends it? Okay, yeah, cool.
So it's student-driven and it has to benefit the students' drive.
Great.
Um, so nine point three D is the short-term investment fund account. This is what Mr. Sharon was referring to. Um, so the board at a certain point in time, because we're, we were waiting to develop. Um, a plan of action for the fields decided to take three hundred thousand dollars and invest it in Connecticut Short Term Investment Fund. And, um, we currently for the month of December have reinvested the dividend of one thousand percent of twenty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. Um, I've also included the annualized percentage rate for the month of December. We seem to be doing well with this account, so I can't complain. Um, this will year to date, we're almost, uh, ten thousand dollars in. Are there any questions on that? So hearing none, nine point three E are transfers. Per board, um, policy, we have to bring, um, transfers to the Board of Education. It's almost a quarterly basis. So these, um, twenty-six transfers represent transfers for the month of. I told them in December. The twenty-six transfers are pretty status quo and they totaled two hundred fifteen thousand, one hundred forty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents. So many of the transfers are for unanticipated replacement or repaired items. Software increases, any, um, increases that were not anticipated. And otherwise, um, basically what is written for the reason is what is there? Are there any questions that the board may have on those?
How do you decide where to get? If I just look at the first page. We moved, I guess you moved some money to unallocated personnel.
So if there was, so basically, so we had summer school funds that weren't spent, so that was available to us. So I moved that to an account that's called unallocated personnel, so that, that frees up the funds, knowing that that amount is free. For us to utilize in, um, emergency situations or other things that may come up.
So, so. So you moved though, okay, so, so like if I look at page, the next page. So we go from, I guess we move money from transportation to supplies.
Correct.
How do we know we have money in transportation? I'm just curious. I'm not gonna go through each one. I just gotta get in, trying to get the idea of what would happen.
So, um, I have a computer that I look at the financial, um, and that's where all of these reports come from.
Right.
So if you wanted to match up the report, you could see that there, well, it would have to be before this one was done. So in this situation, the department quarter, coordinator of the science department reached out and said. Hey, these things are costing me more. I need to be able to cover it. We're not gonna go out to do what we were planning on doing to end the money from transportation.
Great, actually. Okay. I was, because there were so many, I was wondering just how you decide what to do.
Sometimes you say any, any money.
Yeah.
What's happening with custodial vacancies?
Um, so we have not been able to hire custodians. We currently have three custodians short. Um, so we are working with a temp agency to cover our custodian and, um. Two out of the three, um, potentially are firms to hire. So they're temps to perm, I guess is how, how it's framed. So that's why we had to move money out of the salary line to cover their expenditures that we have to pay the temp agent.
In, in general.
Yes.
On this report. I'm just wondering if there's a way to consolidate it. Or we're, we're. Every one of these budget transfers is a page in here and.
I would be more than willing to consolidate it, but in the past, people have wanted to see it, so that's.
Okay, I, I feel like, I, I wanna know from where to where, um, and maybe a little bit of the reason and that's. You know, that's all I would care about.
Which I understand. Um, so this is the best way for transparency for people to be able to see where, where.
Enough of the trees.
Okay, so.
Motion is repelled.
Yeah. Accept the. The transfers as presented.
Okay, uh, the motion was made by Scott Soya.
Second.
Seconded by Drew Galton. Any more discussion? Does anybody have any other discussion on the, on the, um, transfers? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Anyone abstaining? Hey, the motion passes. And that brings us to committee reports. Facilities, safety and transportation.
Sure, I'll start this out. Uh, so we, facilities, safety and transportation, stuff commencing that on January fourth. Topic of discussion at that meeting was primarily, uh, reviewing, uh, the multiple tiers being proposed or being offered. Uh, by the administration for the capital budget proposal. We discussed in, in pretty good detail, uh, each of the three tiers, and I could just say at a very high level. They range roughly, uh, tier three, roughly a million dollars, uh, tier two, about three quarters of a billion. And that brings us now to tier one, which was what you see tonight, uh, presented in the, in the capital, uh, budget proposal. The endorsement or the recommendation of the, of the subcommittee was to go forward with tier one, which is what we're seeing, uh, this evening. I do think that was the extent of the discussion for that particular evening, so that was a wrap. Our next meeting is, uh, scheduled for February thirteenth.
Finance, audit, compliance and insurance. Oh, okay. Meeting was held in combination with.
Yeah.
So negotiations, there's none currently, so.
Still working on getting those set up, hopefully sometime next month.
Okay, and policy was held on January ninth? Carrie, are you on?
Eric Sheehan.
She wasn't, but I mean. A policy committee met and this is, this is the result. You know, some lively discussions, but mostly just this, this stuff.
Okay, and program and communication did not meet? And so Carrie's not here for an update on CAPE. Okay, so that brings us back to the second public comment.
Can I ask one question? Now that we've.
Pardon?
You can ask two.
Just kidding, I should only be one. Let's see how I do here. Now that we have identified new members of all the subcommittees, is it up to the subcommittees in their next meeting to identify leads?
Yeah, so that'll be the first agenda item for the for the meetings now that we've got everything. It was taking some time to get those things flushed out, but yes, that will be the first part of the next.
Wanted to mention it so that anybody new now knows that at your next facility subcommittee meeting that you've now been assigned to, the first topic of discussion will be to choose who is chair of that particular subcommittee. So give that some thought. Yeah.
And another question, negotiations came up here. Is there any news on the the split of the?
They're still, they, I'll say this, they appreciated, the feedback that I received from the union was they appreciated the the board's understanding and recognition and and support of them doing their thing. There are some formal things that need to be done. Those things are are not yet completed. But hopefully they'll be done within the next, you know, couple of weeks.
I believe some some they have deadlines at the end of the month.
Yeah.
State statewide, I believe. When we talked about last night, it was something else.
Yeah, I remember you saying that there is some.
I can't remember what it was, though. I think I feel like it's January 31st deadline. They wanted to split the union. They have to file paperwork or something.
Yeah, so we were working with we're in touch with them. We're speaking like they they know that they're the processes.
But no news, and that's. Yep, thank you.
Okay, Hebron, Andover, and Marlboro Community Engagement and Attendance at BOE Public Meetings is welcomed. The public comment segment of the meeting agenda is set aside so the BOE may receive public comments. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to three minutes, and citizens will be asked to identify themselves. Because the BOE is limited by the Freedom of Information Act to discussing only matters on the agenda, the BOE is not permitted to engage in a discussion of the comments presented. Public comment, anybody online? All right, that brings us to the informational items.
So just some upcoming events. I'll tell you an event that I'm trying to avoid at all costs, which is more weather related closures and or delays. Anything I can do to avoid getting up 4:15 in the morning and being on the phone and text messaging people is something that I want to get away from, and I always said to my kids, and I'm a firm believer in it, I'd rather be going to school in January and February, March than be going to school in late July. So hopefully we're although tomorrow doesn't look very promising right now, so we'll see what happens. But we do have some events coming up. We've got one of my favorite things. Board members have heard me talk about it, but our RAM Unified Basketball starts, I think, this this week. I think we have our first game this week. It's an away game, but Unified Basketball for board members who are aware of what it is. It is our special needs students teamed up with age appropriate peers, and they they compete in basketball games against other local schools and districts. And it's just a, it's a really fun time. So if you get a chance, I can, I'll include the schedule of when games are, and I would highly recommend that you come if you have an opportunity to do so. We do have some in February, we've got eighth grade parent night. We've got our eighth graders then that will be coming up to the high school the next day and doing the transition day, which is quite interesting. Last year, when I saw it for the first time, you just see a lot of eighth graders walking around looking very bewildered in the hallways of high school. It's a, it's a, it's a really, it's it's fun to see. We have a middle school winter concert evening of jazz is going to be on February 1st. We are, hopefully, our ski and snowboard clubs, which has been impacted negatively as a result of some school closures and cancellations and bad weather. Hopefully, they'll, they, we have a ski and snowboard club for both high school and middle school. They go weekly for a period of about five weeks up to different mountains. Hopefully, they'll continue to be able to do that, but weather has impacted that as well. But that concludes my report on upcoming events. One of the things that I'll I'll note just with regards to the disciplinary notes, somebody caught it last time that there was a, there was a, I think somebody said there was two suspensions, and it was 29 days of suspension. Yeah, so we we did, I did go back and look. I I think, if I'm remembering correctly, it was a, it was a formula issue in the spreadsheet that's used to calculate. And and so there was a number that was off with the formula, messed things up. We have fixed it, and we, this should be an accurate representation of 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 discipline. So that that's, I just wanted to let people know that we did find the error there.
I noticed something this time was the sum at the bottom, the total of school suspensions for the high school. Do some of them have multiple categories? Because I noticed the sum of 10 is not equal to the six plus one plus four plus one in the bottom line in the total. I just noticed that those aren't equal. I don't know if some of the suspensions have multiple categories, you know, conduct and writing or whatever.
I I unless.
Not typically. So so something may be wrong still with the spreadsheet.
Oh.
I see.
I see what you're saying.
So there may be something wrong with the spreadsheet still.
Give me, give me something else to look into. God, I appreciate you bringing. I'll look into it.
Anything else on those?
Uh, no, we have to move into executive session. We do this before.
Okay. So.
So it concludes our.
Okay, so this concludes the regular meeting. We have to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing the superintendent's evaluation.
The meeting actually doesn't conclude, but we're moving, we're continuing the meeting, we're moving into executive session, and then we'll come back open to the public meeting after executive session ends.
That's okay. No, that's good. But we also want to move to invite Colin McNamara into the executive session.
I'm moving him after a five minute break. We move into executive session and invite Colin to join us first.
Okay, the motion was was made by Scott Soye.
We can do the break.
Yeah, second. Gabe Marks.
Gabe Marks seconded the motion. All in favor? Opposed? Anybody abstaining?